That's how they give birth.
Is Jean coming today? I got one minute on mine. Order, you'll all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, the invocation by Pastor Corvig.
You can come on up. I was ready to go right into the pledge.
It's my privilege to be here. Shall we pray? Our gracious God, Heavenly Father, thank you for this time of conducting business that is important to all of our communities represented by our county. We ask, Lord, that you would give wisdom to those who have decisions to make, give a calmness and peace and a sense of your presence to this meeting. We ask you to guide each supervisor and all those that might be discussing, presenting, making decisions. We commit this time to you. We thank you for these people that serve and for the patrons that are here, those that live in the county that have special needs. And we ask you to give great decisions in favor of the ongoing of our county, our state, in a very blessed way, for we ask in our Lord's name. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Colby. Need a motion to call for an executive session to be held August 2nd, 2021 at 9:00 a.m.?
So moved.
Motion second for discussion here. Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Committee or legislative reports. Supervisor Langenfelder.
With the legislature adjourned, speaking with Representative Regina Cobb, the work of the Mojave County West Basin Water Users Study Committee will be ramping up here very shortly. As everybody knows, that study committee is tasked with providing water recommendations, policy recommendations to the legislature by the end of the fiscal, or the calendar year, excuse me. So I'm looking forward to being a part of that important water work. Thank you. That's all I have today.
Thank you. Supervisor Goo.
None today, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. I attended my first ACJC meeting, the Arizona Criminal Justice Committee Commission in Flagstaff. And other than that, I attended the community health assessment and the CSA legislative wrap-up meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. I too attended the wrap-up meeting, but as Craig Sullivan is here, will do a far more eloquent job than I would. And I, I was told that the Assistant City Manager, the new Assistant City Manager for Bullhead City would be here. Travis Pruitt, are you here? No, that's too bad. I wanted to introduce him. That's all I have today.
County Manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, good morning. I have a couple items. It starts, starts with the fact that the monsoon weather is here. We have had some storm activities in the last week to 10 days, including this weekend. The Walpi Mountain received significant precipitation in the way of rainfall totaling a little over five inches. And one county rain gauge showed three inches of rain just this weekend in the last 48 hours. With that said, we have some debris in the roads and some drainage crossings, damage. Public Works, Road Department, Division of the Public Works, as well as the Flood Control District are doing what they can to clear the roadways and to survey for flooding damage. We did receive one report of some flooding damage to one home, but the surveying effort is continuing, is underway. Additionally, and really related to that, so federal and state grant funding is an effective way of addressing needs related to projects, programs, and services to optimize county resources. Staff has been active identifying and pursuing those grants and has been successful in receiving some, a few examples. I think some of you board members may have seen the announcements related, but I'd like to mention a few. One is the, and, and point out that those are, those grants to be successful takes a lot of cooperation between various departments. And that is indeed really the case in all of those three. The first one is collaboration between our risk and emergency management, as well as Public Works working together. They did apply for and receive a grant from the Arizona Department of Forestry and Fire Management for $230,000. And that is to go toward armoring culverts and drainage crossings in the Walpi as a post-fire mitigation effort. Because as you know, fires burn vegetations and roots are not there to hold the soil together. Additionally, the Parks Department, Division of Public Works received $200,000 from, also from the Arizona Department of Forestry and Fire Management for hazardous fuel removal. This is, this is proactive activity in preparation of, to ensure that fire fuel is, is removed and, and the site is well managed. And lastly, Public Works and Economic Development worked together. They applied, as you saw previously, for a $500,000 grant and received $250,000. And that is from the Economic Development Authority, and this will go toward Apache Road improvement in the I-40 industrial corridor. So lastly, I just wanted to mention to you that our recruitment challenges continue in, across the board in various departments of the county, including the court system, and some of them are critical and impactful. We currently have over 75 positions in active recruitment. And with that, I conclude. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, County Manager. Move on to call to the public, Joy Bancroft.
Good morning, Chairman Johnson and Board Supervisors. My name is Joy Bancroft. I live on Linden in Topoc Golden Shores. I come before you today to share and bring your attention to two items. First, the last 10 days, development services put in place demolition of an abated property on shore Parkway. And in Golden Shores, it was an ugly piece of property. There was druggies there. There were squatters. It was just horrible. Before the demolition company was in, they started demolition, I arrived along with Senior City Inspector Paul Baffert to find a transient living in the back and approximately 30 cats roaming the property. My concern was to try to get the cats removed. They were friendly, not what I would consider a feral cat. Mr. Baffert made some calls because normally Animal Control would not remove, and before we knew it, Animal Control came out and in three to four days removed 30 to 40 cats, including seven newborns. So thanks to Officer Craig, Officer Weaver, and Officer Blair from Animal Control for working in the heat to remove these sweet cats and kittens. It was heartbreaking. And thanks to Paul Baffert for making it happen. I hope the more, majority of them will get good homes. I also want to thank Tim Walsh and his staff. They debated five properties in Golden Shores probably in the last year. We so appreciate it. Um, this is the, I won't take time, but it's, it's completely cleaned right now. It's a dirt lot yesterday. It's beautiful, beautiful. Secondly, I can't leave without showing you a parcel on 4718 Tulley, and I think I've shown this before to you. This parcel has, we need some help. The parcel had come to a dead end from code enforcement because it appears to be that the bank owns this and it's in probate. So code enforcement has worked really hard, but they can't get any response from any parties. The parcel is an ISO in the middle of an area in Golden Shores with really nice homes around it, including a dirt lot next door that was graded and ready for sale, but they can't sell it because of this mess next door. So somebody, please give me some creative help on what our options are, maybe Tim Walsh's development group. Um, myself and volunteers would love to do something with it, but the cleanup, because of the extent of the debris, would be very dangerous as broken windows, broken doors. And I'm sure we'd need authorization to do that. So thank you very much. And I want to thank Sheriff Schuster. Where is he? For Lieutenant Salvino. He's awesome and the sheriffs are doing a great job in our town, let me tell you. We've been cleaned up like you can't believe. Oh, sorry. I talk loud anyway. Thank you very much.
Scotty McClure.
You must remember. It's still Scotty from Bullhead. Ron, I'm so mad at you for hiring Valerie. She told me I had to be nice to you. We'll see how long that lasts. Does she like it there? You can't respond to me on that. Anybody notice that COVID's rising and we only have 37% of people inoculated? Are you doing anything way out there? Or doing anything about getting some people shots, or people just not going to get them? Are they really that stupid? I'm here to gripe about the fairgrounds. I guess none of you ever go out there, but two or three years ago, they raised the gate fees $2 to $3 for parking. So they were going to improve the place. What a joke that is, except for the blockade, the entrance to that place. I don't know why you, you went from a big place where you get 40-foot trucks in there with cattle on them, go to the rodeo grounds. Now it's down like this. A lot of us go to those places there that, the auctions. A lot of us take trailers in there. It's become like this to fit in there, and you cannot go out while somebody's coming in. Now they want us to go the hell way over there, out in the dirt, over on motor, whatever this street name is. This is bull. You need to take it over like you've been discussing. Kick those lowlifes out of there that you've had the last three times you've had to get somebody else in there. I'm tired of it. You have porcelain sinks that are rusted. How in the heck can porcelain sinks rust? At least they, the cans, I wanted to say something else, but the thing, where you go to the bathroom at, they do work. But it'd be nice to have soap in there. All you got is these stupid bottles for COVID stuff. There's no soap. What happened to washing your hands with soap and water? This new girl, they've got all those cement barricade things, those big things you see on the freeways. They got them all over the place now. You better follow the rules. It's just, it's become a nightmare. It's gotten worse and worse and worse. This is, take it over. At least the maintenance people will have somebody, you'd have somebody to gripe at if somebody makes a complaint. But, all right, library time again. I had to come up here again a week ago when I made a legal complaint against the person in charge. My fourth time about this. I think she may have finally, we were getting like the Las Vegas Review Journal finally. And we get it every five days, all five at once.
Thank you, sir. Chris Rodarte.
Yeah, there comes courier. What does it feel like? Oh, you got the Habsburg paper.
Chris Rod, Chris Rodarte Kingman. Well, here we are, getting ready to spend some of that government COVID cash. Later on, we'll hear all about it. Of course, we can't, I mean, won't be returning the 41 million to Biden and his agency cronies. We'll keep it and be grateful in anticipation of the next inevitable crisis. At the last board meeting, we heard Denise Burley drone on about yet another Wuhan wave, how cases are up and trends are skyrocketing among the unvaccinated. Not enough Mojave County citizens are getting the jab, and golly gee, we need to figure out how to get a shot in every arm. Get ready for a knock at your door, armed with indoctrination, I mean, information, they're marching into a neighborhood near you. Now we have the Delta variant. Should we shake in our boots and go into immediate quarantine? Should family-owned restaurateurs once again tremble at the sight of a man at their doors dressed in dockers and a short-sleeved shirt carrying a clipboard? Should nonessential workers fear yet another job loss? Is it time to rush out to Walmart and strip the shelves of sanitizer and toilet paper? As visions of lockdowns and face muzzles dance in the heads of health directors everywhere, as they salivate over Zoom school, masked up four-year-olds, and small business gone for good, we the people still have our First Amendment right of free speech, even as social media cracks down on misinformation. You all know me by now. I usually quote Jefferson, Madison, Adams, or another of our founders, or recite from the Declaration of Independence, the Bill of Rights, the Constitution, one of those ancient documents. Well, not today. My message is from a HIPER source. In our "we the people" response to the impending inevitable tide wave of crackdowns and shutdowns, I quote Dee Snider, Twisted Sister, whose battle cry we loudly embrace. "We're not going to take it. No, we're not going to take it. We ain't going to take it anymore. We're right. We're free. We'll fight. You see? We're not going to take it. No, we ain't going to take it. We're not going to take it anymore."
Steve Connery.
Hi, I'm Steve Connery. I live in Bullhead City. I'm a new resident. I just moved to the county about a month ago. When the first shutdown happened last year in March, I was living in Henderson, Nevada. At that time, I decided that I didn't want to be locked down, so I put everything in my car and I ran off and traveled all over the country for about a year. I settled in Bullhead City last October and spent the winter there and then decided I would keep on looking for, you know, some paradise that probably doesn't exist. Anyhow, I moved back to Bullhead City in June, and I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for making this such a wonderful place to live. I am concerned about two things, though, and they both have to do with the COVID pandemic. The first being is that I think it's time for us to start pushing back on some of the misinformation that we're getting from our governments, both local, well, I shouldn't say local. I should say federal and perhaps state as well. And one of the things that do concern me is that there's misinformation on the county website concerning the number of cases that are recognized or confirmed in the county. I think it must be recognized that the PCR tests, and this has been shown through interviews with the late Carey Mullis, the inventor of the PCR test, that these are not valid as far as testing for COVID. There is a 95% false positivity rate. I would be happy to prepare a PowerPoint presentation or whatever that would require to convince the board that this is the truth. So I recommend that the county website have a disclaimer when they post new cases or new deaths saying that there's evidence supporting the conclusion that there is a 95% false positive rate for all cases, presumed positive cases of COVID. The second thing I would like to bring up is the, recently in Missouri, Governor Mike Parsons, I don't know if he put a ban or prohibited, but I know he spoke out about the federal government's plan to use door-to-door vaccination information providers. I think that the county, I would strongly advocate that the county consider banning, establishing ordinance banning the door-to-door, you know, this information providing. The reason why I'm mostly concerned about it is not so much, I'm not afraid of the, the door knockers. I'm afraid of my neighbors who may want to shoot them, and I would be in the firing line. I, personally, I bought one of those cans with compressed air, and if anyone comes to my door, I'll just make a lot of noise with it. But I, I just wish you would consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now the highlight of the meeting, we'll have a presentation from Craig Sullivan, Executive Director of County Supervisors Association.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's a pleasure to see each of you. I'm Craig Sullivan with the County Supervisors Association, and I'm very grateful that you gave me this time to talk a little bit about the work of the association as it relates to the legislature and some other key strategic initiatives that we were involved in. I have provided to you the full packet, and there's a lot of information in it. Mercifully, I will not go over everything in the packet because that might get me gonged, but there are a few items that, that I definitely want to highlight for you as we go through this. And just to begin with, I want to extend my appreciation to this board and its management for its involvement in our association. Mojave County being at our table creates a very strong collaboration across the state, and I know I speak for your colleagues when I share that you're very much appreciated, your voice is very much appreciated, and we're grateful for your involvement, and so thank you for that. I also want to extend my appreciation for your legislative delegation. Representative Cobb, Representative Viasucci, and Senator Borelli each have elevated themselves to leadership positions in the State House and are very, very excellent representatives of this region, and I think for promoting good government, good limited government statewide. And so they're always very available, and I want to give my appreciation to them as well. So for folks who are here in the room, I do want to talk briefly about who we are. So the County Supervisors Association is a nonpartisan collaboration of the 15 counties. We focus on sharing information, doing research, elevating best practices. We essentially are an intergovernmental office of the 15 counties. And why does that matter? Well, counties operate in their regions, but they're affected by entities that are outside of your region, and you know this very well. And so we serve as an intergovernmental office, working with state agencies, the legislature, federal government, and the court system. And so it's just a way of efficiently bringing everybody together to have an engagement with these external parties. In terms of the report, I do want to talk a little bit about some internal strategic initiatives first. Actually, let me, let me spend a brief moment on the structure. Every supervisor in the state has a voice on our board of directors, and I'm very grateful again for your involvement in that. We do have an executive committee of folks who serve in our leadership. Supervisor Bishop, thank you for your service in that capacity. And we look forward to your role as president going forward into the next year, beginning in November.
Thank you, Craig.
And Supervisor Angus, thank you for serving on our Legislative Policy Committee, meeting every Friday, reviewing all the bills and sharing your perspective on that, too. I appreciate the extra duty. I talked a little bit about how we use the organization as a forum, and so I wanted to just give you a list of all the speakers we brought through in the last year to dialogue with supervisors across the state, as well as highlight in the lower right the role we have supporting the professional staff in each of your counties. We love that part of our job because it's how we share information across all 15 counties, and we're grateful for the involvement of your professional staff here. I wanted to talk a little bit about a couple of strategic initiatives. One is our data collection initiative. This is something we do internal, and we collect information across all manner of county operations and data points that are relevant to you. A lot of that information is on our website and available to you in what we call our county encyclopedia, our county revenue dashboard, and our county employment dashboard. But it is something that is growing every year, and the spreadsheets are available, too, for professional staff that want to avail themselves of it and for supervisors that want to look at it as well. But I wanted to highlight this because foundationally, everything we do has to be in But I wanted to highlight this because foundationally, everything we do has to be informed by data. And so Vanessa Fielder on our staff has been managing this effort and growing it very significantly, and I just wanted to highlight it and give my appreciation to her for the work she's been doing on it. We will be growing this annually as we go forward to be more and more value-add for our counties. Two other strategic initiatives that I wanted to talk about: public pensions. So you're very well aware that, for various reasons, the public pensions have become incredibly costly, and now it's a matter of how we're able to contain those costs. I'm talking about the legacy debt. And Mr. Johnson, you and I have watched this unfold for many years. What we have been doing in the association is using our office to build out analytical capability, to support decision-making at the local level, and to engage the PSPRS Board of Trustees to inform better decision-making and more cost-effective decision-making at the PSPRS Board of Trustees. This is something that we've put a lot of time and effort in, and we will continue to as we try to control the costs of some of these legacy pension items. We've seen a lot of progress to date in that regard, but there's still a long way to go. And so, I'll be spending a lot of time on that as part of the Pension Advisory Committee, as well as doing analysis and reporting out to managers on where all of that stands. Another strategic initiative that I wanted to talk about that none of us asked for was dealing with the pandemic and dealing with the resources associated with it. We've been using the association largely as a forum to communicate across all the counties. We were involved in making sure that all counties received resources from the CARES Act. Mr. Chairman, you were heavily involved in that with the governor's office when the rural counties were not treated fairly in that regard, and so that was secured. And then, more recently, now that the federal government has chosen to put more resources out in the system, our role is largely reviewing the federal guidance, providing input and questions into the federal guidance, and just trying to help the counties understand what the parameters are of the utilization of these resources. This is going to be a long effort, and we want to make sure that we're doing everything right and that compliance is done properly. I do want to transition a little bit into the legislative process, and I will not get into all of these bills, but a couple of things I want to share. First is, the general effective date for most bills is September 29th. So that means all these bills that were just passed, your professional staff and professional staffs across the state have to figure out how to implement them for an effective date on September 29th. We're putting together a summary document that'll be out shortly that will help counties navigate all of that. This was a remarkable year. Supervisor Gould, you spent a lot of time in the legislature. I don't think you saw numbers this high in terms of bills introduced. I've never known there were 1,700 good ideas to go into the legislative process. Thankfully, very few of those passed, but it was a record-setting year for bills introduced.
And I'm sure there were all great ideas, too.
Absolutely. But thankfully, the number of bills that got through were more on par with typical years. Talk a little bit about the state budget. Very interesting. On the left, I put for you the state spending plan, some of the key elements. Obviously, resources are going towards correction officials, DPS officials, pay raises, education, higher education. Very importantly, and I think the legislature deserves some credit for this, is they put $2 billion towards debt repayment. And when I've come before you in the past, I've put up a chart that showed you the massive amount of debt that the state was carrying from the last recession. They made big strides in terms of paying that down, and some of the money, about $1 billion with, they put in paying down their pension obligation. And so, that was a positive thing to see that they did. On the right, I wanted to break down for you some elements of the tax package. You know, the reason the legislature went so long was because of the conflict over the income tax cut. The income tax cut did get to the finish line, and so they're moving towards a flat tax at the state level if revenues continue to come insufficiently. The cities were an impediment to that because it impacts the revenue sharing. The cities were essentially held harmless by increasing their share of resources that come forward. Interestingly, activist groups have pulled papers to refer this tax package to the ballot, and so that's something that we'll monitor over the next 90 days to see whether they're successful in doing that. They've only referred the income tax portion to the ballot. The other piece is relevant to counties because it changes the assessment ratio for property taxes. Currently, businesses, commercial properties, are assessed at a higher level than homeowners. And the legislature's put in place a schedule to lower that assessment ratio on businesses. So the overall mix does become more lean towards homeowners. This does erode your property tax base, and it does put upward pressure in some counties on property tax rates. Think of a county that's dependent on a utility or a mine. They're definitely going to see a significant change, but some growth will help in this capacity. We did raise concerns about it because of the shifting over to homeowners. The legislative response was to increase something called the homeowner's rebate, which is a subsidy to homeowners that helps buy down their overall tax burden. So that's how the legislature tried to manage that shift. A few other budget items. I've got three slides that I just want to touch on. The organization was not successful at eliminating payments from Maricopa and Pima to the State Department of Juvenile Corrections. You all are out of that because you were successfully relieved two years ago. We were pleased to see that the legislature has eliminated county payments to the State Department of Revenue. This was another way of the state helping balance its budget back in 2015. That'll save your county $125,000, and we were pleased to see they put a lot of dollars on the table for transportation and infrastructure. I did want to point out that your long-term care contributions to the state's healthcare payment, which, program, which are significant, $9 million of your property tax dollars go to pay for the state healthcare system, that is lower than what we would have anticipated, just slightly. And the reason that it's lower is because the federal government has subsidized the system a little bit more. And I wanted to highlight that because that's temporary, and your all-tax payments are going to bounce back up in the next fiscal year. Several items here, and the ones that I highlighted are dollars coming to Mojave County. They've maintained their commitment on the elected officials' retirement subsidy that they had to put in place, in lieu lottery revenues. These are all items that your county helped secure in prior years, as well on law enforcement, voting, safety fund. I did want to point out the work around water supply and development, and you all have been a leader in regional conversations about water management, and there's a lot more that needs to be done. Rusty Bowers, the Speaker of the House, did lead the effort to put a lot of money on the table for water supply and development. $160 million of it is about finding resources outside of our state, not moving resources around, which is a huge threat to our rural counties, but finding new resources to come into the state. And then there were other infrastructure dollars to the tune of $40 million that were put out there for infrastructure projects. We're still learning what all this is going to look like and how you can avail yourself of it, but I wanted to flag that for you. And then, one more slide on the budget. Transwestern Pipeline Settlement, which has been very disruptive in your county. They did put resources for back payments to the local jurisdictions to the tune of $3.5 million here. County reentry planning services, the state allocated resources to three counties. Supervisor Angus, you were instrumental in telling the story about the value add of these dollars, and we were grateful that the legislature earmarked some dollars for this region as well. And then, of course, the Veteran Services Home of $25 million, that was something that Senator Borelli was really working towards. This is just a list of how they spent the infrastructure money. You can see where Mojave's reflected. There is $90 million that were set aside for preservation projects. Those aren't earmarked. We'll see how ADOT chooses to deploy those. And I wanted to highlight as well on the broadband infrastructure piece, a lot of money put out there to support broadband. There is the ability to get resources to do planning work and local infrastructure projects out of this money that's been allocated to the State Department of Commerce. Very quickly, 15 of our counties have seen fire events, and so resources have been put on the table to capitalize that. And then I'll break into a little bit about the bills. We ran four bills in the process. We collaborated on several other, but two were relevant to you folks here. One was, we put a bill in for additional aid for indigent defense and juvenile dependency. That was not successful in the end. The legislature did put a small amount of money in for indigent defense over at the ACJC, so we're going to have to see how those dollars can work their way down to your county. And also, Representative Cobb was running point on the irrigation non-expansion area bill. We supported that as well, and as you know, that was not successful. Water issues aren't going away, so we anticipate that we'll continue to collaborate on that going forward. I wanted to talk a little bit about reactive advocacy. This is where my team spends a lot of time, just reviewing every bill in the process, and then with the guidance of folks like Supervisor Angus on our Legislative Policy Committee, we decide what we want to try to do in terms of amending them, supporting them, or opposing them. This year, there was a ton of activity in both elections and the pandemic, as you would imagine, and here's a list of many of the election bills that did go through the process. 130 were introduced at the beginning of the session, and that winnowed down mightily. The two items I'd like to speak to, we did get a small extension to your redistricting process. We know that with the delay of the census, you were really going to be crunched to get your redistricting done. We got a delay to July 1st, 2022, and there was a change to the permanent early voting list, where there's a mechanism for cleaning up folks who aren't utilizing the permanent early voting list. I imagine that some of the bills that failed on the right will come back next year. They deal with recount margins and things like that. Pandemic bill, oh, very interestingly, when the budget came out, there was a whole lot of policy in the budget related to the elections as well. And so, this is a list of those policy items. Two things I want to point out. There's an election integrity fund to the tune of $12 million that is something that county recorders will be able to apply for. We don't know the mechanism yet, so we'll look into that, but know those dollars are on the table. And then they did form a special committee to review the election audit that the Senate is reviewing. So we anticipate we'll track that as well through the summer. Pandemic-related, very quickly, you know, we worked with the industry on a tolling mechanism when they're getting permits and something like an emergency happens, giving some flexibility to the industry. There were efforts to restrict some of the policies that had been used over the pandemic, and you can see those here. I was kind of interested, there was a dialogue throughout the session about emergency powers of the governor, and there were several bills. They didn't pass most of them, but in the budget, there was a small change to emergency powers, where when a pandemic emergency is called, right now, there's no mechanism to come back in special session. They did put a trigger that would allow, I think, the legislature to have a role 30 days after a pandemic is called. And so, that was in the budget, and I just thought that was kind of interesting. My purpose here is just to show you this expansive nature of the bills that our team gets involved in, that we try to amend or what have you. And the last slide is really just to give you a lot of the bills that ultimately failed. I mentioned at the beginning that we're in implementation mode, so what we're trying to do is just get a handle on all the bills that passed and work with the counties to now implement them. But I did want to highlight that we're preparing for next session now, too. And so, we are asking for issues that you would like us to run point on, to submit them to us by August 8th, and then we will consider them at our Legislative Summit, which this year is in Prescott on October 29th through, September 29th through October 1st. And so, we look forward to having you in that. Now, I know I blew over a lot of content, but I want to be respectful of your time. Just as a final note, I want to thank you again for your involvement. I really appreciate the collaboration with all of you. It's my pleasure to serve you, and I would be very open, and it'd be my honor to do anything we can to support you further. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Langenfelder.
Thank you, Craig. It's good to see you today. Thank you for coming up, giving us that excellent briefing. You know, I only wanted to say thank you for the work that you've done on the water. As you know, that the Mojave County West Basin Water User Study Committee is going to be ramping up here pretty quick, and I don't know exactly how the interface would be, but I know that we're trying to get a coalition, really, of mayors, of county-elected officials, county supervisors from rural areas to really back the legislation that didn't even get a hearing this last year, the rural management area, the irrigation non-expansion area legislation. We see you next year. The legislature is being a really crucial legislature to try to get those bills passed. So in the interim, for the work that we're going to be doing on the study committee and trying to get that coalition together, any way that CSA can back us in that effort going into the next legislative session, I would appreciate it.
Happy to do it, and I look forward to following the conversation at the local committee as well.
Thank you.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Craig, I don't know if you know this off the top of your head or not, so something about posting a voter registration event as a budget policy bill? Hopefully, that only applies to the recorder and not to individual groups that register voters.
Off the top of my head, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor, I believe it only applies to the record, and so I'll go back and I'll verify that and email you after this meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Bishop.
Good morning, Mr. Sullivan. I just want you to know, I'm really looking forward to serving as the president next year for CSA and having many, many more of these conversations. So thank you for coming to Mojave County and presenting to us this morning.
Supervisor Angus.
Craig, thank you so much for coming up today and for making it through this incredibly long and challenging session. I thank you for help on some of those bills that were really bad for rural counties that we fought against, especially the flood control district bill, which went down spectacularly, I hear. So thank you for that and look forward to the next session.
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan, what's the debt of the state right now, do you know, offhand?
I don't. That's another thing I'd be happy to follow up. They're $2 billion better than they were the other day, but I'm certain there's residual. And I would say they did not address, remember the K-12 rollover, which was put in place? That's still significant and on the books. And so, if you give me a day, I think I can come up with the number.
Are we looking at hundreds of millions of dollars?
Well, the K-12 rollover's on the $700 to $800 million range.
Have all the buildings been bought back?
A significant portion, Mr. Chairman, of this budget was to do that, but I don't know if they all were, so I'll have to check on that.
So the legislature's cutting taxes and giving money away, and they still owe hundreds of millions of dollars? Was there any discussion about paying back the money they swept from the counties when they wanted to get healthy? Nothing there, huh?
Mr. Chairman, no, that, I mean, that's an excellent question. I think that what we have found over the last several years was that they're not interested in repaying it, but what they were open to, and this was no easy task, was eliminating policies that continue to siphon off your tax dollars to go to the state, including the DOR piece this year. So a lot of progress there, but in terms of payback, no, I don't see that happening.
So they're not somebody good to loan money to, is what you're saying? They're not good about paying it back? Did business property tax, the commercial, used to be 25%?
Yes, sir. If you go back historically, in fact, I might have a slide in there. I don't mean to hold you up here, but mines and utilities used to be much higher than 25%.
Correct.
I'm sorry, I removed it. They used to be much higher than 25%. I think it was 2006 where the state started moving the commercial assessment, including mines and utilities, from 25% down to 18%, which it is now, and now it'll go down to 16%.
Right, and then we have one pie, and so if it's taken down from the commercial, it goes up on the homeowner, who is least likely to be able to afford the costs.
Mr. Chairman, the overall mix, yeah, shifts to the homeowner, and to the extent you raise your rate, more of the burden is on that, or growth in your assessment, more of the burden is on the homeowners. What they did, though, and I haven't studied this fully to understand how well it works, is they increased the homeowner's rebate. And so, that subsidizes homeowners, and so I have to look at whether that just works globally or whether it works in every local jurisdiction.
But then, that rebate is a fixed amount right now, and so as the value of everybody's home keeps going up, their piece of the pie is going to get bigger every time. It might have worked for this year, but it's not going to work for next year or the years after. It's going to continue to get higher for the homeowners.
I think that's a fair statement. I think that's a fair statement, and I'd like to look into that more. The homeowner's rebate is capped at $600, so there is a limit, and you have property taxes on the secondary, too, and the homeowner's rebate does not provide relief on the secondary.
Right, so those are going to...
It's just on the secondary.
Those are all the questions I have. Anything further? County manager, you have something?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick follow-up. Mr. Sullivan pointed out the reentry, the bill that provides for funding for the reentry program. I just wanted to share with you and the board that we will have an agenda item on the second board meeting in August related to that very reentry program. So we're looking forward to bringing it in front of the board to get ready to move it forward.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Oh, Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Craig, I remember when I was in the legislature and when I reduced the commercial property tax, right? I believe that the plan was to backfill part of the, from sales tax and income tax, to fill that difference to local taxing authorities, and I'm curious to see whether that ever happened.
So in that there would be an increase in another revenue source to offset losses on the property tax side?
Correct.
Okay, that did not happen. That did not happen. I've seen changes to, and I don't, I'd have to go back to reconnect with the narrative. I've seen changes to urban revenue sharing, income tax sharing, when the state has lowered income taxes, and that again occurred here. I've not seen a commensurate increase in shared revenues on the property tax side. Let me go check on that, and I'll get back with you on that.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you all very much for your time.
We'll go to the consent, taking one motion, items five through 34. Supervisor Angus, you have any... Minus will be pulled?
Yes, please. I'd like to pull 16, 21, and 28.
Supervisor Bishop?
I have none.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number 14.
Supervisor Lingefeld?
28's already been pulled, 28.
I'll need a motion to approve the consent, minus 14, 16, 21, 28.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion and second for a discussion. Hearing now, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Supervisor Gould, item number 14.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious, we're going to dispose of the double-wide structure located at the fairgrounds, and I'm curious that this building, or it's a mobile home, I believe, and it's probably a pre-HUD mobile home, I'm assuming, has no value, that it couldn't have been sold rather than demolished?
Good morning, Supervisor Gould, members of the board. We did include pictures in the backup. I'll probably rely on Mr. Lutowski to speak as to the structural stability of the building. There's a lot of flood damage and rot to the building. I don't know that it would be safe to even attempt to sell.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
Further questions, have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 14 be adopted.
Second.
Have motion and second for a discussion. Hearing now, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 16, Supervisor Angus.
Thank you very much. Is Alan Tempern here? So the item is to approve and sign an agreement with Runbeck Election Services for printing and mailing of election materials.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors and Supervisors. Yes, it is.
Okay. Couple of weeks ago, at a meeting, Senator Borelli showed us a new ballot. It's a fraud-proof ballot, hopefully. It had a hologram on it, and it was treated with a certain chemical that only Special Light can read. And is that the ballot that we're talking about here? Why?
It is not. Now, all right, this is still in the planning on the legislature's side, all right, but I'll tell you, Runbeck, these are two separate items. Runbeck Printing Services is a service, it's a vendor out of Phoenix. Right now, we currently use, well, we used up until this point, a vendor called KNH Printing, which was in, up in Washington. It was, I worked well with them, they were a very good firm, but this last election, Recorder Blair, is she here? Okay. Recorder Blair was getting a lot of inquiries concerning, I don't know how a lot is, but she had told me a number of inquiries, concerning, why aren't we getting our ballots from Arizona? Why don't we have a vendor there? And really, the logistics behind it is we were getting ballots shipped down to us for early voting, you know, down to the recorder's office and out to the people from Washington, and we're always on a very tight timeframe. We're within days type of stuff when this thing comes down, okay? So basically, what this item is, is changing from a vendor in Washington to a vendor in Phoenix, okay? And really cool, because when you're working with somebody in Phoenix, and the prices are like, they're like, they're right there, there's no difference. But if you really have to go there, and I had to do one time many years ago when I first started, to another vendor, we used, I can go pick them up. If I had to go get something, I could drive to Phoenix but not Washington, all right? And it's a really good organization, okay? I mean, it truly is. Now, these ballots you're talking about, I'll tell you what, I, this is really confusing to me. Now, there's nine different points, I believe, okay? And right now, the legislature passed this, and the legislature passed this, and you have to have at least three of these things, you know, out of the nine to make it acceptable. But right now, it's voluntary. It's voluntary, because I can see me coming to you later on and saying, do you want to spend five times as much for a piece of paper? That's about what I'm kind of being told right off the bat, because we've checked, not me, but my association, check with Runbeck.
Mr. Tempern, it's fully funded. The ballot is fully funded through the state.
Ballots, okay, but in the future, it may not be.
But it is now. So my point is, on this issue, on this item, maybe we need to table it until you get more information.
Well, I still would have to use the other vendor, and they can't accommodate. Right now, Runbeck's looking into how they can accommodate the request. They're a very large organization, and they print for across, basically speaking, it's this, or if we table this, and we go back and still use KNH, next time I print ballots from Washington, they can't do this. Right about now, nobody can do what's necessary, so I'm told. And then this is the very last thing, I'm sorry, Supervisor, right now, we're checking with our tabulation vendor. They went and did this without have known it a tabulation vendor, which we use election systems and software, if they can read these ballots. And if they can read these ballots, I'm so sorry, if they can read these ballots, then they have to go to federal certification again. It's going to, could take a couple of years for this to happen. So of course, I'm up for anything, okay, down the road, but right now, yes, no on this part of it, but I'm going to need ballots printed for November for somebody.
Can you bring us back a presentation or something, some information, because I don't think you've gotten the whole story? And maybe I'm wrong, but, you know, because the session went so late, I understand the timeliness of it, but there's stuff going on that I think we really need to be made aware of and see how we can onboard with that system.
All right. Can I speak with you later on, and then I can kind of get like, just a better feel, okay, I got it, and then I will reach with my associations and reach with...
This contract, what is it, 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 what's the word I'm looking for? How long do you have to be part of it?
You get, you can get out of the contract at any time. Penal County also used the same printing vendor we use. Both us and Penal used, for the last six years, we used this vendor up out of Washington, and they chose to go another direction. So we decided we'd follow Penal because it's a good organization, it was in the state. So they, they're just a printing vendor that would print like anybody else would. So we could get out of that, we could get, I know where you're getting at, we could get out of it at any particular time, and I can do that, I can ask Tara to look at the terms and conditions, and most things, 60 days notice, 90 days notice, that type of stuff. You're right behind me.
Supervisor Angus, because we're using a cooperative contract on this, I believe that we could terminate at any time, because we're not the one that's contractually obligated to continue services, we're piggybacking on a cooperative contract. My concerns with KNH is that we had previously used the cooperative contract for KNH with this same organization, so I don't know that there would be a contractual option for KNH. If you decided to table this and we were to look at it again, we'd want to make sure that we could find a viable procurement avenue.
I just want more information as you find, I mean, I would think that now that it's, that we're out of session, you should be getting all the information about what they just, you know, put on you.
I will, I will look, I will speak with my elections official group that we're doing and find out, because I have a few people that are actually out there, like another elections director and a recorders groups, they're out there saying, can this be done? In reality, it just real, at this time, with the technology, can this be done? And it takes a couple of years sometimes, literally, to get changes through the elections, EAC, Election Association Commission, it's a federal thing, to allow us to do any change at all. But yes, I definitely will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alan, I had a call from a constituent claiming that Runbeck was all over the media. We couldn't find where they were all over the media. I was wondering if you had any information on that.
No, I can, I'll tell you why. Because they printed for Maricopa.
Ooh.
That's the reason. They also print for Pima. They're now printing for Penal, Yavapai, and hopefully Mojave County, I mean, you know, hopefully, this is what we're bringing to you. Five out of the 15 counties, four at present, work with this company, and they print internationally, not internationally, wrong, they print across the country as well. That is the reason, okay? There's no doubt about it. It's the only thing, I know nothing about it. Their facility is, and their checking points, I was there. I, Recorder Blair and I, a year ago, took a tour of their new facility. We happened to be in Phoenix in a meeting, spoke with the Runbeck people, well, two years ago now, COVID, I'm off a year in life, right? And the security functions that they have down there, and the ability to do things, it's a very good organization. So alls I can simply say is one word, Maricopa.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Supervisor Lingefeld?
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Alan, just a couple of questions. I know that this is a cooperative contract. Does that mean that we use the cooperative contracts specifications for printing of ballots, or do they use, would they use Mojave County's specifications for the printing of Mojave County's ballots?
Oh, I don't...
In the sense, if we chose to require something, some of these new protections to assure, you know, voter integrity, would they, would they print to those specifications, or are you locked by the specifications of the cooperative contract?
I don't know. And I'm so sorry to say that, I've never thought of that.
Well, that's why we're having a public meeting. I'd be interested in knowing that, too. Also, my second question is, I know that, you know, a lot of government entities, they typically require a printer to put up a performance bond, you know, because of how important it is to get our election ballots on time. What's the drop dead date, the timeline on when you need to have a vendor in place?
When I need to have everything in place? I got a schedule that they're working with me right now on, but basically speaking...
You got an election in November backing that up?
An election in November, four months out.
Okay.
I have to have them, they'll say ballot-proof faces, and within a week or two, they'll have a turnaround back to me and saying, this is what is, and I start testing. So doing that way, approximately three and a half months out in front of the election, 30, 60, 90, we'll say about 100, you know, a little, close to 120 days, maybe 100, I'm testing to make sure everything's working correctly.
Sure. So do, my point is, do we have a little bit of time to figure out some of these questions?
I, yes, we do.
Okay, great, thanks.
How are you adding those days up? Because that's November.
Okay. All right, July, August.
What, three months?
October, November. That's three and a half, we're getting close. It just has been on my mind now for the last month or two, not this very same thing, but the timing. I'm still working on an August election right now, but we're not having any ballot printer print those, it's a very small election. So it's getting very close, Supervisor Johnson, that's true.
Okay, we had a citizen that wanted to speak, Scotty McClure, you still want to speak?
Can I address something on this as well? Can I address the item that's actually being considered, though? Sorry. The board actually approved using this cooperative in April, and what we're asking the board to do right now is sign sort of a piggyback bridging agreement that clarifies that Mojave County is using Pima County's terms and conditions. So the item that we're actually asking the board to approve at this time is the piggyback agreement, not necessarily the use of Runbeck. You guys already approved the use of Runbeck in April.
Well, back in April, we didn't know about the fraud-proof ballots.
I would agree. It's the use of the co-op is what you approved for printing. If our needs determine that they can't meet our needs anymore, we do have the option to back out. But just this specific item is, when we went to issue the purchase order for Runbeck based on the board's approval in April, the vendor reached out to us and said, other county agencies, they're piggybacking on our contract, are doing this sort of supplemental bridge agreement that just clarifies the terms of using it as a piggyback. That's what we're asking the board to consider today.
Would it be possible just to continue this till next meeting, so you can have some more information?
Absolutely.
So if that's okay with the board, I'd like to make a motion to continue this till the first meeting in August.
Second.
Motion and second for the discussion. Hearing now, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, item number 21, we have someone signed up, Scotty McClure.
Is this somebody here?
Alan, did you leave something up?
Alan? Here for the presentation.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay. All this stuff up here, I don't do this. Anyway, in the last couple of weeks here, they've been doing a major redo on the cable channel, not the off-air channels, that we pay for, and it's a really good deal. I mean, on our tax bill, it's darn near nothing, you know, but they have been screwing this up, and I think it's FCC and whatever doing this. But the thing is, we never are able, we have outages, and we cannot ever contact anybody. I have to call the Board of Supervisor people. And I don't think it's really their fault or their problem, but we should be able to get ahold of these people. They've been doing things since last weekend, about five days ago. Now we no longer get, get, receive, get TV on Channel 35.3. It's gone. Court TV's gone. I mean, gone. You can't reprogram it back in. We lost Channel 7, which is Gunsmoke, et cetera, bonanza, all last weekend, gone. Now it's back, but we have, I have a whole list of this stuff that is gone. Now we have three shopping channels, three weather channels, what in the hell? Period. Why do, you know, who told us that? Where did this come from? We have no idea, they don't put anything in the paper that they're doing anything. I have had to reprogram my TV five times this weekend alone. I lost Channel 3, Jeopardy, et cetera, through the three channels, 3, 3, 3-1, 3-2, and 3-3. I lost those about three years ago. Now, all of a sudden, I get them on 16, 1, 2, 3. Now, I reprogrammed it again yesterday morning, Sunday morning, and it's on Channels 3, .1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. Now I got them back. Now, why should I have to reprogram? It takes about 20 minutes for me to reprogram my TV. What about these people where their programming flicker don't work until their people come in and change their diapers in the morning? They're not getting it reprogrammed. You guys haven't said anything, nobody said anything about this. And here's the one thing, Kingman gets more channels than we do. We're, oh, you, like, Calisou gets more channels than we do, but we all pay the same price. That's bull. I don't know, there's a combiner up here in Kingman somewhere, and it should have the same amount of channels, same channels, same price, but we don't get that. So something needs to be really done.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor Angus?
Thank you. I did take it out because Scotty asked me to, but just as a, out of curiosity, who makes the decisions on what channels come out and where they go? I mean, is it just purely what you can, what you can get on your receivers or your antennas? I'm not quite sure. I know Yvonne usually does, I know she's not here today. Maybe we could have a little report next meeting or something?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus, will do. I do not have an answer for you, but we'll have an answer next board meeting. I do not have an answer for you, but we'll have an answer next board meeting.
Thank you.
It'll, it'll probably just be a presentation from the county manager.
Supervisor Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We also need to know if the lineup varies from area to area, I believe, would be something else that should be included.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
If the lineup varies from area to area, is everybody getting the same channels or are there variations in the channels? Other than my folks, they get nothing, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Angus.
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve item 21.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 28, Supervisor Angus.
Yes, thank you. I have no idea what this one means, so I'd like a little explanation. Mr. File.
Chairman Johnson, I'm Brian Bolington, I'm the superintendent at Owens Elementary in WikiUp. I'm also the superintendent of Baghdad Unified. The request that you have in your packet is for a additional levy to correct a cash balance deficiency. And as you may well know, school district budgets are formula-driven, based on enrollment, transportation, and any other MNO overrides or small school overrides. When current year funding started back in 2016, 17, our budget used to be determined based on our enrollment from the prior year. That was an easy number to use, it was a fixed number, easy to deal with. In 2016, 17, the legislature changed to a current year funding, which means that districts have to estimate their student enrollment for the coming year. And if that estimate is too low, the tax rate is set on that estimate that was determined on the proposed budget and the adopted budget by July 15th by the governing boards. Later in August, late July or August, the county supervisors used that the tax rates based on that formula. There were a couple of items that happened in 16, 17. I started working with the district three years ago, and there was a couple of things that occurred that their cash balance or their taxing levy didn't equal their budget capacity. And that budget capacity is, is right now, we're, we're sitting with this current year budget, a cash balance that will be $186,000 less than our budget capacity. Owens had a cash balance issue last year, but we were not able to correct it during the proposed and adopted budget and get the tax levy corrected. Now, there's three ways that a district can increase that cash balance. And two of them reside with the governing board. One is, we can overestimate our student population. Second one is, we have a small school override, which our limit, I think, is $212,000. We could levy all of that and try to increase our cash balance. The problem with both of those is that our cash balance, is our budget capacity goes up as well. So, we would have a budget capacity increased by $186,000, but never have the cash to spend it. And that system is, we want to balance that. So, after current year funding came into play, the legislature realized this problem with under, under taxing, okay, based on estimates, transportation budget. And they put in this provision, ARS 992-F10, which allows the Board of Supervisors, the governing board of Owens Elementary voted to request to you to correct this cash deficiency. They also voted not to do it all in one year. They've asked that that levy be spread over two years. It's an increase of $1 from last year's tax rate. If we did it in one year, it would be obviously $2 to $3 higher this year. And we're not asking for that. We're asking to correct half of this deficiency this year. Next year, we would come back to you again and request that that deficiency be corrected, the remaining balance. Questions?
Supervisor Angus.
Do you, do you guys have a board?
Yeah, we have a three-member governing board.
Okay.
Same as all school districts.
And did you put anything on the last ballot for an override?
No, we, we, we can't do an override because we're, we have a small school adjustment. We're, we're in enrollment of under 125 kids, and there's a provision in statute that allows the district to do a small school.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, so, sir, when you estimated your students for this year, you took a look at the students you had in the prior year, I'm assuming?
Correct, absolutely.
So, did you have reduced in students this year?
We had reduced students during the COVID year, yes.
Okay. And the legislature's not paying you for those students?
Oh, absolutely not. If they're not enrolled, they're not attending regularly, we do not count them. So, we, we get, we have to revise our budget throughout the year. So, if I estimate I'm going to have 50 students, and somewhere during the year, I lose 10 kids, by November 15, or excuse me, December 15, I have to revise my budget down. And that means I can't spend that estimate that I had earlier, I would have overestimated.
So, essentially, what happened is the, the COVID broke out and you, the kids just weren't coming to school anymore.
Well, that's part of it, but part of it happened back in 2016, 17, when current year funding started. Okay? And I want.
I'm Craig McKee, I'm the chief of that, Mr. File. This is, I'm sorry. This is a situation that is occurring around the state, especially with the smaller schools. This is our first time bringing it to you as a board, but in other counties, this is happening. This statute was designed specifically for situations like the one here at Owens, where they estimated in one of these years, they'd get 20 kids, or, sorry, they got 15 kids, they had 20. So, they were off on their enrollment projection, they're going to be lagging behind. It's, it's issues like that and other things that will probably, unfortunately, cause this to recur in the future. We'll be coming back to you again and saying, unfortunately, in this particular instance, in those years, they guessed wrong, and we need this adjustment. So, we can, we can hopefully, as we, as we learn more about this process in the future, we, we're hopeful that we can turn this into a thing where we're just presenting this as the most open way to show what's happened for this particular district. They need some money because in the past, they didn't ask for enough, if that makes sense.
And in theory, in a smaller school, effectively, one family could move out of your school district, and that could be a large percentage of your enrollment.
That's exactly the situation. It's, it's a case where it can really be a roller coaster. The small schools have to go through all of these trials and tribulations to get their funds, the same way a big school does, but you have these little tiny adjustments that could, you know, throw things completely out of whack.
And then you could go back to the voters for the money also, but you said that increases your budgeting capacity in future years also?
Yes, but before this current year funding thing happened, we were more likely to do this as a small schools adjustment. But in talking with the superintendent, and talking with their consultants, and talking with some of my counterparts from around the state, because again, this is new to me, but this is what this statute was designed for, where we've had this issue, we didn't count enough students, more people moved in, something like that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Bishop.
Owens Whitney Elementary School, is that WikiUp? Okay. Do you have a line of credit, or have you applied or attempted to get a line of credit?
No, as, as Owens, if your school district budget is under 750,000, you're not required to do annual audits from a certify, CPA. And we have an audit by the Auditor's General Office, but that doesn't qualify for a line of credit. So, Owens is not in a position to get a line of credit, same as most large districts can.
Okay, it just seems like that would simplify things if, because the, the attendance fluctuates in a small community, so. But there's no way to get a line of credit, or, can you use the, the accounting line of credit? Is there a way to go through finance and?
No, and, and there are other counties where the treasurer will register warrants if we, if we run out of cash, but the treasurer here doesn't do that. So, we're, we're really in a situation where if we have this hole, we would hope to use this statute to fill it, to where we can show that the school board did this, and then they brought it to you guys, so that you could look at it and know the situation.
So, what kind of a number are we talking about for the loss of students? How many, how many students did you lose?
Supervisor Bishop, this is a combination of several things, going all the way back to 2016, when they, when they proposed their budget and adopted it. And I know that in one particular year, they didn't levy what they should have done for their transportation budget. And that was close to $100,000 that they took a loss. Now, cash versus budget, the way the, the way the old system worked of prior year, tax rates remained relatively stagnant, they didn't change. So, your enrollment might go up, it might go down, but your taxing remained consistent. So, most districts had a cash surplus. And as Supervisor Johnson noted earlier in the meeting about the state sweeping the cash, the state did that to school districts, too. And, and so that put everybody down to their minimum. And so, this is not just a one or two-year issue, this goes all the way back to 2016, 17. And the district had adequate cash for those years, but the budget and student enrollment going up, they didn't tax enough.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Langefelder.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Can you say, tell us, how many, how many children are educated at the elementary school?
We've got about 25 in the elementary, and we tuition about 13 high school students. So, you're talking 38 to 40 kids a year.
Right. So, they stay in the area when they're in the elementary school, and most of them, do they, are they not, when they go to junior high, middle school, and some of the high schools, they come into Kingman?
They either go to Kingman or they go to Baghdad.
They go to Baghdad.
And that's only nine through 12, because Owens is a K8.
Right, okay. I appreciate it. You know, I think that, I respect you guys coming here and trying to do things the most transparent way possible with this. It's a tough situation. I think in the future, if there's anything that your board or you can think of to make sure that this doesn't happen in the future years, that you'd work very closely with the district one board, so we can try to, try to prevent that. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, will you receive payment for the children that you underestimated from the state?
Um.
Future?
No, because we don't get state aid. Owens is a non-state aid district because our tax levy is much, or our, what is it? Base support level is, is higher than, our tax of support, I mean, higher than base level.
And Arizona school funding is incredibly complicated. It has so many moving parts, it's kind of hard to fathom, to tell you the truth.
If the base tax levy wants to set by the state, if that taxing itself generates more or enough to educate the population you have versus, and your budget, based on that population, you don't get state aid. So, essentially, a rich district, that money goes into equalization and supports other districts. A poor district gets more state aid.
Sure. And since you have the, such a few number of students for that taxing area, then you don't receive any state aid.
Correct.
Thank you.
Chairman Johnson? I make a motion to approve item 28.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, I'll open the public hearing, discussion, possible action, consideration of all objections. And the petition filed for the formation of proposed Virgin Acres Improvement District located in Littlefield, Arizona, has been determined to be signed by a majority of the persons owning real property within the proposed district, and that the public convenience, necessity, or welfare will be promoted by the establishment, determined and declared the board's findings, and either approve Resolution 2021-112 to establish proposed improvement district, or determine it amidst the proceedings. Do we have someone here from the improvement district? Ms. Lutowski. Do we have anybody from the public that wishes to address us on this public hearing? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Ms. Lutowski, uh?
Somebody in the back raised their hand.
Is there somebody back there that wishes to address us? Come on forward, please. Sorry, Ms. Lutowski.
I'm a member of the committee that's trying to get this improvement district established.
Can you state your name and your address, please, sir?
Oh, Wayne Hutchinson, Beaver Dam, Arizona. That's where the Virgin Acre Boulevard Street is in, up in Mojave County, northern Mojave County. Basically, I had to go around and get all the signatures, and everybody keeps calling me and wants to know what the cost is going to be, so I'd just like to have, if you get an engineer or something, and so I can tell them what it's going to cost, and I got to go back out and get all these signatures again. So, hopefully, this will be approved, so I can get it done. It'd be nice, I know it can't be done by September, but that's when all the snowbirds come back, and it'd be easier to fix the road before they got back, because the traffic will really increase. So, that's basically all I want, is just get a cost on this road, if we can.
All right, well, this will be for the formation of it, and then it'll have to, if this is passed, then it'll have to come back for incurring expenses, or go ahead and they'll get a.
Oh, okay.
From the, it's not going to be September, I can guarantee you that.
Oh, boy. You see that road?
It'll be quicker than the state fixes the highway, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to address the board? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Ms. Lutowski. I guess the question I have is, has this been filed the correct way? I haven't seen things that are missing on it, not added into it. One piece of property?
Chairman Johnson, members of the board, staff took receipt of the petitions that formed the district, consulted with the county attorney's office, as well as verified the signatures. We have verified that 51% has been received, petitions.
Are you saying that the postings and the?
Correct.
And the paper were correct?
That is correct, Chairman Johnson.
I didn't see where was a Great American Land was included in that.
Yes, Chairman Johnson, we carefully looked at the situation concerning a large, over 1,000-acre parcel that was actually fronting Rincon Road, as well as where Virgin River Boulevard bisects. We did find that that parcel was not included in the legal description that accompanied the petition to form, and as a result, if the board were to consider forming the district, that large parcel would not be included in the district.
All right. Questions from board members? Supervisor Langefelder.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. I know that they actually reached out to us, and I reached out to Steve to actually confirm that they were not included.
That is correct.
And once they received that, the word that they were not included, that they did not have any objection to this.
That is correct. So, essentially, what happened was the property owner was notified of the contemplated formation of the district, but because the property was not included in the legal description, they are in fact not included in the district should it form.
All right, so the, if, if this is approved today, then it'll just be minus Great American property?
That is correct. It would be strictly with regard to the properties listed in the legal description.
All right, do we have anything else? Mr. Espin.
Chairman Johnson, members of the board, I just want to jump in here, just real kick on one item, everything that.
Excuse me, one second. Are you familiar that we have? Are you familiar that we have a board attorney?
We do, we do. He's right here. He's wonderful. He's excellent. He is far better than your previous one. The issue was exactly what you've pointed out. There was one, there was concern whether that parcel was included in the district, and as Mr. Lutowski pointed out, it was not. If you also look at the map that was included, the boundaries, you'll see the boundary essentially makes a triangle, and there's a little portion that went over into that adjacent property. That should be excluded. That part should be out as well. So, it should just be that triangle that the board is considering today, and not any portion of, what is the name of it? American, Great American parcel. That parcel should not be included at all.
So, the motion would be, if it goes forward, would be to accept the petition minus any properties dealing with Great American land?
Yes, that would be our recommendation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Esplin. Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Supervisor Johnson, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2021-112.
Did you put in the removal of Great American lands? I didn't hear it.
Oh, excuse me. And I would also, I would amend my motion, approve the resolution with the addition of the conditions that Americans' land is removed, moving forward.
Second.
I have a second for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Discussion, possible action, approve the adoption, board of supervisors, resolution 2021-102, amendment to the general plan. I have no one signed up for this. I have a motion, discussion.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 37. Prove the adoption, board of supervisors, resolution 2021-103. It's a rezon. Permission to recommended approval. It's a pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I have a presentation by our sheriff.
Good morning, Chairman Johnson, distinguished members of the board. Madam Clerk, where is she? There she is. Mr. Elters, and our newest addition. I don't think I can recall the name. What's the name? Anybody? Nobody knows? Okay. Okay, I'm going to try and present to this as briefly as possible. Each year for the past five years, I've come before you now, pointing out the status of the sheriff's office, and trying to address the overall needs. Nothing has changed for this year in regards to those needs. And so, what I'd like to do is just kind of walk through this, and give you an idea of what we've accomplished. Before we get into what's required, here's what we've actually accomplished, and this is not all encompassing. We've really transformed our agency into that of a professional and transparent agency. And very important, we are no longer considered a training ground, as we have been in years past. That comes at a great savings to the county. We are now attracting certified officers. Their experience is vital. I don't know why this thing's jetting through here like this.
Hello, prompter.
I can read fast, I can't read that fast. It's important to note, we've also improved our response times. That was a concern when I took office in 2017, and we are building very solid relationships with those we serve. We continue to improve through programs, adding, you know, K-9 inmate work programs and the like. But what I'm very proud of, and this is 100% the result of the men and women that do this job, is we have had continued reduction in property crime each year for the past four years. In fact, burglaries, which are always ongoing, are down close to 50%. So, that shows that they're getting the job done. The needs assessment. I'm going to kind of back up to 2017. This is going to be maddening if I can't get this fixed, but we'll try and work through it. And I'm going to back up to 2017 specifically for Supervisor Lingenthaler, as you weren't here at that time. When I took office in 2017... Why is it going? Shoot through it though. Okay, great. Thank you very much. When I took over in 2017, I had worked 26 years with the sheriff's office. We had some faltering years, we had some poor years, and we got to a point that we recognized very little growth. Our agency was somewhat broken. We could not attract, we could not retain, and we had a limited amount of resources for several, several years. During that timeframe, that 25-year timeframe, the population in Mojave County more than doubled, and our calls for service more than tripled. So, you need to understand that when you have limited deputy sheriffs covering the county this size, we have to have a staffing level that's inclusive to the amount of calls that we take for service. Everything's impacted when we don't. We had high vacancies, 18 vacancies, which was a monumental number. That's close to 30% of our overall patrol staff. And our salaries were inadequate. They're still inadequate. Compression was a problem. With the thanks of this board, we were able to partially fix compression, but we have a ways to go. So, our response times were high, our crime rate was high, and quite frankly, the public was not getting the service that was needed or that they deserved. So, what did we do? We came to you folks, and we said, "Look, these are the noted problems. We need to increase funding, we need to fix compression, which was paramount, and we need to start adding staff." So, in that first year, we were successful in partially completing our compression. And that was very vital, because we had deputies making, with 10 years on, making very close to starting wage deputies. That's why we had such tremendous turnover problems. In year two, we didn't ask for any money. We were in contact with the manager at that time. He said there might be some fiscal concerns, so we said, "Okay, we'll hold off," with the understanding that we needed to continue our growth. In year three, we had a good year, and thank you for that. We were able to formally add six deputy sheriff positions and complete our partial compression at that time. So, last year with COVID, we had a bad year. Everyone had a bad year. We were able to internally freeze some jail positions, and that's worth noting. The reason we were able to use these 10 positions that we froze for other salary options, we never, in the last four and a half years, have gotten to a point where we could fill those positions. We simply have a real big turnover problem in the jail, and it's something that we're going to address here today, and I'm going to ask for your support. So, we're in year five now. We've had some measure of success. We've slightly increased our starting wage, but again, it's not enough, and we have to move forward from this point on. One thing I want to point out, our detention officers start at $16 and change. This is unacceptable. Our turnover in the jail is critical. It has been, and will continue to be that way until we start paying competitive wages. Our deputies are starting at just under $21 an hour, and this is 10 to 30-plus percent lower than our local competitors. And this is going to be an ongoing situation. You know, our rate goes up, their rate goes up. We've got the Highway Patrol starting their officers out at $26 and change. Two of our deputies are actually looking at them right now, and we have to remain competitive. I lose sleep at night with the issues in our jail. We have wonderful staff, those who have stayed. Tenure is very low. If we can get somebody up to three years in that jail, they're considered a veteran officer, and that's a shame. Mandatory overtime, sometimes for great extended periods, it leads to fatigue. They're burnt out over there. You know, that's why we have these high levels of stress and resignations. We do conduct exit interviews on everyone who leaves the jail, and almost to the man or woman, it's because of the pay and the burden of burnout. We all know that safety is priority in that jail, not only for our staff, for our inmates, and for the public. That holds true on the street as well. This is driving me nuts here. When we hire our staff, we offer them a competitive pay range. They know what they're getting into when we hire them. The problem that we're running into is when we look at that range, if we fail to continue with performance raises, which are earned merit raises, they don't advance. Two years go by, three years go by, now that three-year officer is earning the same as that one-year officer. We've seen it firsthand. It doesn't work. The money we throw at training over and over and over again, bringing in new hires, is significant, and that's not to discount the fact that we're losing veteran-season officers. These are the ones we want to keep. So, we've got to avoid going to that in the future, and the way to do that is to be competitive This is something that I just was looking at. I spent quite a lot of time this weekend just thinking about our county budget, if I can get it to stay on the page. And I want to say this. We've had so much support, support from this board, support from Ms. Lloyd and her staff, support from our county manager. We know that we're a rural county, so we understand to a great degree. When I look at the budgeted numbers, I understand there is built-in inflation in those numbers to ensure that we don't go over our funding. Historically, the sheriff's office, we turn back money every year. Think about the madness as sheriff to stand here and say, "I need money. I need to make sure that we fund our deputies and can continue with raises, and if we can't make that happen, I end up turning money back in at the end of the year." Well, that's because there's so many budgeted line items that I have no control over. I can't use them for salary. Okay, this is consistent. It's not like one year I had a salary savings. Every year that I've been in office, I'm giving back money. Okay, so that's a built-in savings. But when you look at the historical data, you know, this year, we're budgeting $105 million out of our general fund, and we anticipate spending about 90 of it. Okay, so there's $15 million of built-in security, and kudos to Coral for doing that. That's a smart way of managing our funds. However, if out of that $15 million, I'm returning another $2 or $3 million, and I can't get the funding I need, we've got a problem. And it's a problem that needs to be fixed, not for me, for the safety and the security of this county. We need to continue to grow, and we need to take it serious each year until we're where we need to be. I just will mention that we are looking for the substations. I know that has been budgeted in this year. I hope that you will support that when the time comes. Currently, we're asking for six deputy sheriffs, and we want to continue with our compression or our raises. That was the initial proposal. I'm here to change it. We're just struggling too much to a point where I'd be remiss if I didn't explain our actual need as of this date. I'm recommending that we do a pay increase for our deputies and our corrections immediately. Okay, we're fine at the top end. We give them 10 steps. Top end's not a problem. It's the entry wage that's hurting us. My recommendation is that we bump that up two steps. Let's get them popped out quicker. By the time we get seven or eight-year veteran officers, we're very stable. So, if we are able to make those transitions by bumping up starting pay for both corrections and patrol by two steps, it will come at a cost of an additional $1.5 million above my initial request, so a total of $3 million. I told Coral about a million more, which would be 2.5, but my numbers weren't correct when I spoke to her. So, in a nutshell, I'm asking for $3 million funded for the sheriff's office to increase starting pay for both detention and patrol, and adjust those positions throughout. And in reality, if you want the real fix, give me $10 million right now. Fine me $10 million, and I'll hire the deputies I need, and pay them what they need, and we'll fix the jail, and we'll just overnight become a powerhouse agency that takes care of law enforcement in Mojave County. That's the real fix, but I'll settle for three. All right, any questions?
Supervisor Lingenthaler.
Thank you Chairman Johnson. Sheriff Shester, this request, you mentioned that I'm new, and how does it affect your overall multi-year plan?
This will bring us back in line, Supervisor Lingenthaler, with where we should be in year five. We had five years up to this point. We've really only accomplished two. So, this is going to bring us well into where we need to be, leaving us about 36 deputies shy of where ultimately we'll have to get to. But the pay solution will be, I would say, a very long-term fix, because what I'm trying to express to the board is, once we get our staff to that topped-out position, as we have turnover and as we have people retiring, the newer officers coming in at the lower rate, the money is already there. I don't need to request additional funding. So, we want to be self-sufficient, but we've got to get about 70% of our staff topped out. So, definitely in line with our plan.
Thank you.
Not even go one step further, Supervisor Lingenthaler. The plan was designed to be fluid, because we knew we might not have success in certain years. So, we're looking at the end game, and how we're going to reach that end game, and the key to reaching that end game is to retain the staff we have and add as we can. That's really the end game.
Thank you.
All right, thank you Sheriff.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
All right, we'll move on to item number 40, an update from the community services regarding this Veterans Villas.
Morning Chairman Johnson, board of supervisors. Currently, at this time, Kingman Veteran Villas, which I'm very happy to report, is currently full. So, we've had 48 of the units that were available have been leased, and currently, we have the veterans in there and providing those services. So, that's been great. That was a monumental movement by the community. I'll say that the VA played a huge role in this, as well as Adams Construction, as well as other members of our community really made this happen, to bring the Kingman Veteran Villas to fruition and to light. And we also just had a ribbon cutting, which was a little over a week ago. Senator Mark Kelly was there, and we also received a certificate of special congressional recognition from Paul Gozerar's office as well. So, that's currently where we're at with the Kingman Veteran Villas.
So, you've obligated, how many housing vouchers do you have total for the county?
There's 549 housing vouchers.
That could be used by the veterans?
No, no. So, we have, the Veteran Villas was a project-based vouchers, so there was 48 vouchers attached to those facilities. So, there's two different vouchers. The one is project-based vouchers, which basically, that's allocated to that project, Kingman Veteran Villas. The other remaining vouchers can be used by any community member anywhere within the county.
But did we take 48 of our vouchers and use them on this project?
That is correct, sir.
And you've used those, you've obligated those for 20 years?
Those were obligated through the planning stages that were set forth before I came, but yes, that is correct.
So, I am to assume that without our obligation of 48 vouchers for 20 years, this project wouldn't have happened?
That is correct, sir.
I guess that was my question, because I did see this ribbon cutting that happened way after we've done this project. And I noticed that the city of Kingman was standing up in front and doing all the talking and handshaking, and I had Supervisor Bishop there, and Supervisor Lingenthaler was there. Senator leaves, and then they're left over later. I'm just curious, if this was a Mojave County function, why the county wasn't centerplace on this?
So, Chairman Johnson, this came about very quickly through community partners. This was a community project. I also got a chance to be the emcee for the event, lead the event, as well as go through the process. In regards to the city of Kingman, Mayor Miles was also involved, with Senator Kelly coming to the event, having that opportunity, as well as other elected officials having that opportunity to speak at the event. Every elected official that was there that would like to speak at the event was given that opportunity. that opportunity, and I also had a chance to go through, and just like I am today, really, it was grateful, because it's a, the project itself, when you look at it, it's just not a Mojave County Housing Authority project, right? What I mean by that is, we have Adams Construction, which put up the money to actually do that project and to make it happen. Now, we did give them the vouchers, which allowed them to be more competitive in the process for the light tech, so that's the low-income house taxing credit. So yes, that did make a difference in the project.
They made the whole project. I thought that nobody's going to build this. They get the whole thing. And the city of Kingman refused the first location they had. I'm just saying, this project was built a long time ago. It appears to me that the city of Kingman is jerking your tail by saying, "We're going to have a grand opening now with the senator." That's all. That's all I wanted to bring up. Anybody else have any questions? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Supervisor Angus.
Item 41.
Item 41.
On April 5th, this board directed funding from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, to be divided between the five supervisor districts. That would mean a total of approximately $8 million per district over a two-year period. I believe most of the money from my district should go back into the community within the guidelines of the act. It's not a secret that my passion is recovery for addicts and alcoholics and all who struggle with addiction, particularly women. When I first moved to Bullhead City, there were no residential treatment centers. Today, there are four. As we know, we have been seeing an increase in people with addiction problems due to COVID. We want help for all that want help. The treatment centers are a great start and hopefully mean everyone who wants a bed will have a bed. But just as important is what happens after treatment, whether it be 30, 60, or 90 days. Currently, there are three sober living homes in Bullhead City. Because of the increase in clients through treatment and drug court, there is a waiting list to get in there. Sober living is the next step for addicts to reenter society. They must pay rent and have a job. There are strict rules and requirements, but to someone who comes out of treatment with very little, it means the world not to have to go back around the people, places, and things that got them into trouble. Women reenter society while still having the support and structure all recovery programs rely on for the success of the client. West Care, Arizona, has identified a house in Bullhead City that would be ideal for this purpose. It's a very large house. The home would be for women only. I want to clear up an error that was printed in the Havasu Herald today. Although West Care Foundation's headquarters are in Las Vegas, West Care, Arizona, is its own entity, and all the money will stay in Bullhead City and Mojave County. Therefore, I make a motion that we authorize a District 2 project for the use of the ARPA funds in the amount not to exceed $1 million for West Care, Arizona, to acquire and renovate an existing property in Bullhead City to serve as a sober living home. Further, authorize the chairman to sign a funding agreement with West Care, Arizona, to formalize the terms and conditions of the funding. Thank you.
One second.
Mr. Chairman, yes, the county attorney's office does believe that this qualifies under the statute, the federal statute, as well as the Department of Treasury's interim guidelines that they've published.
Any further discussion?
I have a question, Chairman. I read that West Care is out of Nevada, and I didn't know that.
I just, I just talked about that, because it was in the paper today. They are an international, in fact, if you want to know exactly what they are, Cheryl DeBats here, but West Care, Arizona, is its own entity. So all the money that comes here stays here. It doesn't go anywhere else. Okay.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious, who's going to hold title to the property? Will the county hold title to that, or somebody else?
West Care will own title to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
I think this is a great project. You know, I know that there's another facility down there by the name of Revive. They're actually leasing their facility from us. The need's there, and it does comply with all the grant guidance that we've received and the director of the board. So, you know, I applaud your heart for that area, and thanks for bringing it to the board.
No further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned.